Good evening and welcome to the January three regular meeting of the Holland City Council. I am Mayor Nathan Box and I'm calling this meeting to order. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Byrd.
Present.
Reiman.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Corbin.
Sol.
Here.
Rowan. Shay.
Here.
Schulteis.
Present.
And Mayor Box.
Present. And thank you, Mr. Reiman, for correcting me. It is not January. It is July. Been spending a lot of time in air conditioning today, so I've forgotten what it's like outside. We're going to begin this meeting, this evening's meeting, as we have for many years, initially with an opening prayer, followed immediately by the pledge of allegiance, and I would invite you to join us. Please pray with me if you're so inclined. Lord, thank you for our freedom. Thank you for our independence. Thank you for the opportunity to celebrate what it means to be an American, both tomorrow and every day. Lord, help us to be good neighbors. Help us to remember those in our neighborhoods who may be veterans suffering from PSD. They may PTSD also. For the animals that may not enjoy the fireworks. Lord, we'd love the opportunity to celebrate, but let us also be mindful of our neighbors. Lord, help us around this dais to be good stewards of the resources that have been entrusted to us by the people of the city of Holland. Help us to make good decisions. Help us to listen. Help us to converse with one another to find the best answers for the people that we serve. Lord, in your name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next items on our agenda are our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine, and they will be approved by council with one motion unless a member of the public or a member of council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda, and then it will be placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. But before I ask if anyone wants to have an item moved from consent to the regular agenda, Brenda, would you please review the consent agenda for us?
Okay. For A, excuse the absence of council member Rowan. For B, approve the minutes of the June 19, 2024, regular meeting and June 26 study session. For C, accept executed oaths of office. For D, a rezoning request for 5320, 5304, 5298, 5266, and 5252, 147th Street, and a portion of parcel 03, 005, 012, 00, AKA 5260, 147th Street, with final adoption on July 17. For E, accept claims filed against the city. For F, award the bid for two lip bulbs. For G, renew the service maintenance agreement with Great Lakes upfitting. For H, annual discrimination report. For I, a revocable license agreement for fence at 943 Grand Ridge Court. For J, approve the bids for roofing, painting, and exterior finish and insulation system for the Holland Museum. For K, appointment to the principal shopping district board. For L, termination of the lease agreement for parking lot 9G.
Thank you, Brenda. Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, any member of council that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none there either. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
So moved or approved consent agenda?
Moved by Corbin. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Byrd? Any discussion? Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Byrd.
Yes.
Reiman.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Sol.
Yes.
Shay.
Yes.
Schulteis.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address council on any matter that they believe is important. We do have guidelines for public comment. First, this is one-way communication. It's an opportunity for the public to be able to speak to us. We're not able to answer questions during this time or engage in discussion, but it gives you the opportunity to speak to us about what you believe is important. We do also limit the time. Your time is limited to five minutes for each speaker. And there are three lights on the dais to help you keep track of time. There's a green light, which means you're doing well on time. There's a yellow light, which means that you have one minute left, and a red light, which means your time has expired, and we are strict about that. We ask that when you approach the podium, you please state your name and the municipality in which you live, so that we can keep track of whether someone is a City of Holland resident or not. Now, having said that, if there's anyone here who would like to address council at this time, we ask that you please approach the podium. Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda, item number seven, special order of the day, public hearings. Request to approve Brownfield plan for GF&amp;K Equity Holdings LLC and Jubilee Ministries Incorporated for 467 Ottawa Avenue. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and those who are here or viewing from home. I'm going to have Mark Myers come up and give a background, not only on Brownfields, but this project and all other things. Just one thing that I know Mark will highlight also, but probably kind of beating him to the punch on at least one thing. It is in the report that this is what I'll call more of a, you know, standard, what we've done with Brownfield plans in the past. And we know that, and in fact, Mark is leading a team of staff that are taking a look at creating new policy now that we have now housing TIF legislation in place. And Mark will probably cover, maybe will cover this again, but we don't have that policy in place. But this certainly, we would, and you'll see a recommendation in the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority recommending moving forward with basically a support for this project. So just wanted to make that clear moving forward, that this is for a portion of the project, and we know that there's interest from the developer and members of the project to have an additional request in the future. So thanks, Mark. Hopefully I didn't steal too much of your thunder there.
No, you're, thank you, Keith. No, you're good. But you can help me advance slides, because I'm really bad at it apparently, so. Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Keith. Thank you, Mayor and council. Well, I'm pleased tonight to present a proposed Brownfield redevelopment plan. It's been a couple of years since we've approved a plan. And interestingly, some of the developers tonight were involved in that last plan, which was the Vista Green project. So before you tonight is a plan to redevelop a portion of a two-acre site at 467 Ottawa Avenue. If you could advance the slide.
It should be working now.
Is it working now? Yay. Whoops. Okay. GF&amp;K Equity Holdings and Jubilee Ministries is proposing to redevelop this site. It would be a mixed-use development, including 11 townhomes and 11 for-sale self-storage units. Notably, the 11 townhomes would be attainable and affordable housing. And I do have an update for council. I did confirm that since I wrote the report, Lake Shore Habitat for Humanity will also be involved in this project, as they were in Vista Green. So Jubilee will have six units aimed at households earning 80% to 120% AMI, or area median income. And then Habitat will have five units aimed at 30% to 80% AMI. So a little bit more about the project. Phase one would be demolition of the property and construction of the self-storage units. If you've driven down Ottawa Ave., you've probably noticed that the building is gone. I'll note that we've been working on this project since October. And under the Brownfield Act, the developer has six months from start of demolition to approval of a Brownfield plan. So we've been talking about this incentive for a few months now. The second phase would be the residential portion. A little background on the property. It's the former SAF Holland offices that moved from there in 2020, so the building's been vacant for four years. It's considered functionally obsolete based on our assessor's review, which makes it eligible property under the Brownfield Act, so that we can do a TIF capture, and some of that capture can be provided to the developers for eligible costs. Those costs include due diligence for acquiring the property, lead and asbestos abatement, demolition contingencies, and then preparing and administering the Brownfield plan. The proposed capture, a TIF capture, so tax increment financing capture, would be 12 years. The developer would be reimbursed for eligible expenses of approximately $295,000. There'd be an administrative fee paid to the city of approximately $18,000 for administering the plan. And then about $208,000 would be captured and placed in the local Brownfield redevelopment fund, which you're familiar with. I believe all of our active Brownfields have that capture in them. And what that does is provides seed money for additional future projects. So this proposal checks a lot of boxes for the council's goals and objectives. For the Brownfield plan goals, it eliminates an obsolete property. Budget goals, it provides long-term property tax revenue and value. And then, under the Housing Development Support Policy, of course, it furthers attainable and affordable housing. And I'll also mention that the Washington Square Subarea Plan, you might remember that from last year, that was incorporated in the city's master plan. This was one of the sites in that plan that was identified as a redevelopment opportunity. Keith touched on the housing TIF. The developer does plan to apply for a housing TIF once staff has developed the criteria and come to the Brownfield Authority and also the city council to have you consider amending the plan to include that new incentive. Briefly, the housing TIF allows a Brownfield capture specifically for housing, making it in and of itself an eligible activity without having contamination or an obsolete site. And then it pays for the difference between the cost of building the home and the selling price. And again, we'll be bringing that back to city council. We're getting close. We've drafted some criteria, and our staff team is putting some final touches on it. I think you might see it at a study session probably next month. Also note that the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board adopted a resolution to approve the plan and recommend it to the city council at their June 4 meeting. And then lastly, we do have representatives of the developer here tonight to answer any questions you might have during the public hearing.
Any questions for staff or the applicants? I've got a couple. Mark, I'm going to ask you, and you may not know the answer, but maybe Mr. Gross or Mr. Wilkinson would know. First of all, I heard you say that the housing TIF would pay for the difference between the cost of building the house and the selling price. And immediately my brain went, well, there shouldn't, there should be a profit there. But there's, in this kind of a situation, it's likely to cost more to build the home than they're going to be able to sell the home for. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then you did some ranges that they're looking for, the homeowners, in regard to the AMI, which doesn't necessarily mean a lot to those people listening at home. And one of the questions that we often get with these are, well, yeah, but they're not going to be houses that anybody can afford to live in. Do you have an idea of roughly what the cost is going to be for the final purchase price on these homes? Or a range at least? And if you can't, I'm wondering if maybe Mr. Gross or Mr. Wilkinson can do that for us.
Yeah, I haven't been provided that information at this point.
So I'm looking over at Mr. Gross or Mr. Wilkinson. If you can give us an idea, even if you can't give us the home price, the idea of what those ranges are in actual dollars that people are making, so that the people at home can go, is that a home that I would be able to afford? So welcome to come on up to the podium. We'd love to have you speaking to the mic, so folks at home can hear you. And I know who you are, but the people at home probably don't, so I'm going to ask you to introduce yourselves when you come up.
Steve Gross from Jubilee Ministries, my partner.
Don Wilkinson from Lake Shore Habitat.
Okay. And Habitat does a typically lower range. So what's the range of incomes that we're looking at when we're talking about the range of AMIs that you guys are serving?
Yeah, so 30 to 80% AMI runs from about $30,000 for a single parent with one child up to about $65,000, $70,000 for a two-parent household with two children.
Okay.
And so our homes are always tied into 30% of their income. So the mortgages that our homeowners pay typically run between $150,000 and $200,000 on their mortgage. The cost to build our homes, and I'm just going, because we haven't finalized it on 20th Street, but we're around $240,000, lot included and everything. So the money that Mark talked about is the difference between that 240 and, say, the 170, and we still have to put a little money with it, so.
Okay, great, thanks. And Steve?
And our model's similar, but different, where our buyers are making between 80 and 120%. That's a real shortage area right now. If you go on Zillow and look for any house under $250,000 in the greater Holland area, you'll find one or two. And so we're focusing on teachers and first responders and nurses. Those are the folks that are buying our homes. And so the average sale price for us is somewhere between, depending on their income, because again, we use the 30% of their income to create a mortgage. And it's somewhere between $220,000 and $250,000, somewhere in there, depending on their income. Right now, a family of four in the city of Holland that is at exactly 100% of the area median income is at $99,600. And so that would be their family income, family of four, right at 100%.
Okay. You're both basing your mortgage on 30% of their income. What's so magic about the 30%?
Well, yeah, go ahead.
There's a lot of data that backs up. If somebody spends more than 30% of their income on housing, they start, their family starts needing to give up other things, like healthy food, trips to the doctor, car repairs, things like that. And so, yeah, our goal is that everybody's paying 30% or less on their total housing price.
That's that number that, we've heard that here before, but I always like the public to hear it again. That's where affordability is, right? If you're paying 30% or less of your income on housing, that's considered to be affordable for you based on what your income is.
Yeah, and keep in mind that 30% is their mortgage payment, their taxes, property taxes, and their insurance. All three combined to that 30%.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Raymond?
Yeah, I'd be interested to know about this combination of housing and storage units. Why didn't you just do housing on the whole property?
I'll speak to that. We were invited to the party. You know, they, the developer had purchased the whole thing and then asked us after the fact to partner with them.
Any other questions for the applicant or for staff? Mr. Shay?
Just really quickly, where does the AMI statistic come from?
That's a number that HUD puts out every, I believe it comes out in June. And it's also specific to each county. So the Ottawa County AMI is higher, actually, than what the Alleghan County AMI is.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Mr. Van Beek?
Maybe just some more information, and partly because we're, for everyone, AMI is area median income, and HUD is housing and urban development. I think I got that right, right? Yeah, yeah. So we throw that around. So as we talk about in future months, when we come to a study session to talk to you about housing TIF, Mark did a great job of explaining, you know, this wouldn't be before you right now, except for, because it's on an obsolete property, then it qualifies under current Brownfield rules. But we know that there's an additional request for that housing TIF component. We don't have that incorporated, because that's relatively recent state language. So we've been kind of waiting for other people to have policies that we can, like, how are, how is this being implemented? So we're taking a look at that. We'll have that discussion with you. So that would have the ability, there's already a nice chunk of money on the table here before you tonight that helps not only with the entire development, but obviously, and hopefully specifically for the housing. I don't think that we'd ever get to the point, nor would there be enough capture available in the TIF or even our policy that we would recommend, hey, we would be able to completely close the gap between the cost of the house and that affordability number. So I just want to make that clear to everyone, too. But I know that it's been a, we figured out how to do it in other projects up until now. We know that it's a council priority. So what we need to do is just continue to figure out, like, what's the right amount of public involvement and public benefit that we would get back for participating in a project like this, where we're foregoing some taxes for a public benefit back? So just a little bit more there. That's what's coming. That's not what's before you tonight. But hopefully that, again, just, sometimes I need to hear things twice, you know, a couple times to get it straight. So that's where we're heading for. But obviously, this has been recommended, and we think it's another project in the right direction. Certainly, we've had several others with some great partners here.
And if I could add to that, just what Keith was saying, I mean, we're just trying to close that gap a little bit. But we also apply for federal home loan grants through the Affordable Housing Program. MISTDA has come out with some favorable, although questionable on how we get there, grant money that we apply for. So it's just a piece of that pie to close that gap, along with a lot of philanthropic dollars from the Holland area.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant or for staff? Great. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
This does call for a public hearing, so at this time, I will open a public hearing in regard to the request to approve the Brownfield plan for GF&amp;K Equity Holdings LLC and Jubilee Ministries, and as we've now heard, Habitat, Lake Shore Habitat for Humanity, for 467 Ottawa Avenue. Public, this is your opportunity to speak in regard to this item. Is there anyone here who would like to address council in regard to this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Brownfield plan for the TF&amp;K Equity Holdings LLC and Jubilee Ministries Incorporated for 467 Ottawa Avenue.
Moved by Corbin. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Shay. Any discussion by council?
I just have one comment to make. I want to really congratulate Jubilee and Habitat and the staff, and also want to thank the person, whoever it was that invited. I guess that would be GF&amp;K Equity Holdings for inviting Jubilee and Habitat to the party, as Mr. Gross said. Affordable housing is one of the top priorities of this council, and as we have learned repeatedly from the public, it is one of the main priorities and top issues and concerns for the public and the people of Holland. It's not an easy problem to solve. It takes a lot of hard work. It takes a lot of diligence. It takes a lot of creativity, and I think this is a very creative option to be able to come up with housing on a site that had previously been commercial and industrial property. And sharing those two things, I think, is a great thing. So thank you all for that great work and being able to do that and help us move forward with one of the main priorities that this council has.
Brenda, would you please call the roll? Oh, do we have, I'm sorry, Mr. Shay?
Yeah, sorry, thank you. I just want to point out, this is a great example. I mean, echoing all of that, that the mayor said, is what we can do at the municipal level, right? And what we can have an impact on. And I encourage, I'm so grateful for staff and everyone that's been putting all the effort into these complex things. And this is exactly the type of creative thinking that we need to continue incubating and feeding that machine, because, huge kudos. This is what we're being asked to do by the public. We're seeing it over and over. So thank you so much. I really appreciate all the work that's gone into it.
Any other discussion from council members? Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay. Reiman.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Sol.
Yes.
Shay.
Yes.
Schulteis.
Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
And Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item number nine, written petitions and communications. In addition to providing the opportunity for members of the public to be able to come and speak to us in person, to tell us what they think is important, we do also have an email address specifically for that purpose. It is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Those emails go directly to all council members and gives us the opportunity to review those in between our regular meetings. And then at our regular meetings, we do accept those into the record. We don't read them out loud at the meetings, but accept them as part of the public record. We do have two of them this evening, so I would entertain a motion from council to accept the written communications and petitions that we have received from the public. Moved by Corbin. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Shay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item 12, Echo 6.1, purchase of Zamboni Model 446 for the ice rink. Mr. Van Beek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We were putting the agenda together last week, and we were like, you know, I think everyone knows we're doing this. We could put it on the consent agenda. And I think the sense was, you can't purchase a Zamboni without, you know, like, bringing some attention to it. So I know we have three members that probably are very eager about this and can talk about it. So I'm going to hand it off first to Matt, but Andy and Jamie are also in the audience, and, oh, they laughed. Well, that's all you then, Matt.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're stuck with me on this one, apparently. Could you just advance the slide? So the item that's before you tonight is, if you hadn't heard, we're actually building an ice rink in Holland. It's under construction now. One of the key pieces to that is servicing that ice and making sure it's a smooth, good surface when we have skaters. So we are recommending to you that we purchase a Zamboni. A Zamboni is probably one of the most famous, specific pieces of equipment that exist in the world today. I think it's, name recognition, obviously, is definitely out there. But we went through a pretty intense process. If you'll notice, the report that's here is written by myself and by Mark Groenhide. So if you don't know Mark, Mark is one of our mechanics. And all of those guys jumped in on this. What do we need? What's the best thing? What accessories do we need? So we actually had a meeting, Zoom call, with the folks from Zamboni. And the result of that is what is in front of you today. We've learned a lot about Zambonis. But one of the things that comes with this purchase is that you get training. And we have people that will come from Zamboni and help us with that ice. We'll have B-32 there. We'll have those Zamboni people there. But we are probably going to be auctioning off rides on the Zamboni. And Keith, if you actually will, advance another slide for me, please. So this is a picture of a Zamboni in the wild. This photo was actually taken in the Zamboni pit at Joe Lewis Arena, so prior to Little Caesar's, during a Red Wings game. The young man that's in the passenger seat happens to be my son, who is now nearly old enough to have one of those Cold Miller Lights with me, not quite, but getting there. And the gentleman driving actually happens to be my brother-in-law. So we know some people to call if we have issues with our Zamboni. But the recommendation comes from myself, comes from our mechanic staff, to get this coming. It's going to take about a year to get here. The purchase would be in the amount of roughly $117,000.
All right. Any questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Schulteis?
Matt, one of the things that I'm so impressed with the city staff is long-term planning. How does this machine play out into, you know, warranty, maintenance, replacement, like periodicity?
Yeah, so that was a big piece of the discussion from the mechanic's side of things, right? Okay, there are electric options, so we look at our EV purchase policy. There are propane options, and there's gasoline options. The recommendation comes to you to buy the gasoline-powered option, because that gives us the longest longevity and is the best in our kind of applications. So we have an outdoor rink, so some of those other options are not great when we could be running the Zamboni when it's two degrees. In the photo, everybody's got a sweatshirt on, because it's 60 degrees in ice arena, 55 degrees, whatever it is. So we went through that process with the mechanics and with the folks from Zamboni to have those discussions, to understand what the long-term maintenance application of... and warranty is. There is warranty information in the report, if you're interested, with exactly, I'm not going to tell you what it is, because I can't remember exactly what it is off the top of my head. But no, that was a big part of the decision-making process on which style of Zamboni to actually purchase, to make sure that our people can actually be the ones that go out and fix it as well. They can fix anything, I have 100% confidence in them, but there definitely will be a warranty period with it.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Corbin?
Matt, what, how are we going to house this unit? Can you explain to the public how we're housing this unit?
Yeah, absolutely. So Zambonis pick up ice, so they have to be stored inside. So if you remember the ice rink layout, there's concessions in ice skating rental building, then there's a little covered pavilion, we'll call it a pavilion area between that to another building. In that building is indoor storage that's got the Zamboni storage, so it's inside. The stuff that a Zamboni brings in is frozen much of the time, so it's got a melt pit in there, the Zamboni itself has got a thaw-out, and then that will also house what's called a tool cat to help us with snow removal. The Zamboni can do some snow removal, but if we get eight inches overnight, we need to get all that off the ice before we come back with a Zamboni and refinish it. If you go out there right now, you can actually see the footings for those buildings, and you'll see that there's another, looks like another building attached to that other building, the Zamboni building. That's actually more of the outside equipment that's going to be used to chill the ice.
All right, any other questions for staff? Great, thank you, Matt. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the purchase of Zamboni Model 446 for the ice rink?
Motion approved.
Moved by Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Bird, any discussion? Brenda, would you please call, oh, would you please call the roll? I thought I had you there. Oh, we have discussion. I'm sorry, Mr. Shea.
I just need to specify that Zamboni's a brand, it's a resurfacer. Can we just get that on the record? Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All right, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay. Raymond?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Sol?
Yes.
Shea?
Yes.
Schulteis?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda at 6:32, communications from the city manager.
I'm going fast, I'm going fast. It is the 3rd of July, if you don't know, which means tomorrow is the 4th of July. City offices will be closed, of course, all of our emergency personnel will be on, and there's a lot of other things going on in the city also, so please take advantage of food trucks at Collin Park during the day. It is a Thursday night, so we still do have Street Performer Series tomorrow night, and then culminating with the fireworks. It is not the City of Holland fireworks, it's the Makatawa Area Coordinating Council, where the group of regional governments all contribute to that. Collin Park, along with Dutton Park and a lot of other places are great places to watch the fireworks, but hopefully see a lot of you out at Collin Park. We did have a great public education video by our police department with a junior police officer Clara, you might have, we saw that at study session last week. And just again, a reminder, that is state law, that outlines the use and the appropriate use of fireworks. And we're in that period right now through July 5, where you can use fireworks privately from 11:00 a.m., but only till 11:45 p.m., and you need to do that on private property, which means you can't do it in parks or on roads. So please be careful with that. I think a lot of you know, we did, unfortunately, did have a incident where we had a garage and associated home that caught on fire, and we think the cause of that was some fireworks that were lit off and weren't properly put out, and so please be careful out there. And then you all have postcards, I think, at your space, advertising the Ambassador Academy, which again, is an exciting new initiative, the first time that we're doing that for another priority of council, right? And Ambassador Academy, it's really the hopeful phrase, because we want that citizens that sign up for this, at the end, we think they're going to be impressed by the city departments and staff and all the things that we do, and that they will become ambassadors for the city, and sharing information with friends and neighbors and coworkers. And we have had a fantastic initial response to that. I think we are already up to 12 applications within the first three days and counting. So we do have limited space. It is limited, of course, to City of Holland residents' preference. I would say we're trending pretty well, where this will not be a one-time thing, this will be an annual thing, but we will fill up soon. So if anyone's interested out there, please apply, and council members, pass these out. And that's all I have tonight, 6:34.
Thank you. It was not my intent to rush you on that, but we did not have to turn the yellow light or the red light on for you, so, well done, well done. Next item on the agenda, appointments and communications from the mayor. I do have a number of appointments to recommend to council this evening. I'm recommending that city council approve the appointment of Janet Heiser to the Human Relations Commission with a term expiring June 30, 2027, and also recommending the reappointments of Jeff Minkus to the Human Relations Commission with a term expiring June 30, 2027, Scott Traeger to the Compensation Commission for a term expiring June 30, 2029, and Carolyn Malouf, Patrick Thompson, and Lynn McCammon to the Holland Energy Fund with terms expiring June 30, 2025. And I would entertain a motion from council to that effect.
Support.
Move, move to?
Move to.
Move by Corbin, is there support by Freeman?
Sure.
Sure, support by Freeman, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I just wanted to say something about one of those appointments.
Yes.
Janet Heiser is, I think, will be a great addition, I mean, everybody's a great addition to the committees that they're joining, but Janet posted something on Facebook the other day about her experience as a person with disabilities and the challenges that she faced when she was traveling recently, and it was so interesting to read that, and so I'm so glad that she'll be part of that.
Great, wonderful. Number 15, item 15, appointments, motions, communications from council members. Mr. Corbin, do you have something this evening?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. It's my recommendation, the city council accept the reappointments of Ben Aguilera and Robert Sorters to the Community Pool Authority, terms expiring June 30, 2028, and then also Charles Murray to the West Michigan Airport Authority, term expiring June 30, 2028.
What is the pleasure of council in regard to those recommendations?
So moved.
Moved by Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any other appointments, motions, communications from council members? Yes, Ms. Sol?
I just wanted to say, if you had a chance to check out Pride last Saturday, it was amazing, very inviting, and very respectful and very safe. They had a great turnout for family, friends, and allies, and it was just a wonderful day that everyone had a great time. I was at the volunteer, out on the lake shore, recognition, and they said everything went really well, and they were really appreciative to all the, everyone that was visiting, and, you know, it went off without a hitch, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other motions, communications, appointments? Mr. Bird?
Want to speak a little bit about activities we have going on next week. Actually, not next week. The reason I'm setting it up is it starts on July 15, and it goes through July 21, and that is the Laup Fiesta Week. Our next public meeting is on the 17th, so I wanted to put that out there for the community. It'll be concerts, films, conferences, and vendors. So everybody come out, participate, and support Laup, a great organization in our community.
All right, thank you. Any other motions, appointments, communications from council members? Mr. Corbin?
Just to say, happy Independence Day to now the City of Holland, but also all of America.
Great, thank you, Mr. Corbin. Any other motions, communications, appointments from council members? Seeing none, there is just one motion I would entertain at this time. Move to adjourn. Moved by, was that Freeman?
Still was.
Mr. Freeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned, thank you. Have a wonderful evening.